All right, good morning, everybody. On the order of the regular schedule, Board of Supervisors speaking for this Tuesday, November 27, 2018, and asking everybody, please, join the Board as we honor America with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good morning. First item on our agenda is public comment number one. This is an opportunity for members of public to address items on today's agenda or anything you want to address. Anybody wishing to do so, come on up. And seeing no one moving to the microphone, wait no minutes this week, so we'll move on to personnel actions.
As presented.
I stand.
Chidi.
Aye.
Olsen.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Personnel actions passed, claims for the 29th.
Louis presented.
Olsen.
Aye.
Chidi.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Considered.
As listed.
Second.
Chidi.
Aye.
Olsen.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Public hearing items, consideration of Resolution 1930, approving the loan agreement, awarding the sale, and authorizing the issuance of a $1 million urban renewal tax increment revenue bond. This is for Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor, Phase Three. Leanne.
Good morning. This is the final phase, or final stage in this process. It is a public hearing, so it's going to get done. That process needs to be followed. We have one institution that responded to the request for, and it's Great Western Bank, so this was afforded down, and the payment schedule is included. Anyone?
3.94 percent for 10 years. Anything else that needs to be out there before we open the public hearing? Okay. In that case, we will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone who would like to address Resolution 1930, issuing a $1 million bond to pay for the Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor, to be paid back out of revenues from the Wind, basically the Wind Tower, Wind Tower's been a few other things. Anybody wishing to address that? All right, I'll close the public hearing, turn to the Board for action.
I would so move that we approve Resolution 1930, approving the loan agreement in the amount of $1 million to Great Western Bank.
Second.
Motion in the second, further discussion. Olsen.
Aye.
Chidi.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Additional items, discussion consideration of Resolution 1945, this is the Oak Hills Residential Parcel subdivision. Aye. Morning.
Okay, so this is a residential parcel subdivision request. The applicant and the property owners are both here. Connie Auto and Chase Connaught, so the applicants and the property owners are Charlotte and Howard Auto. The property is located in Richland Township along 677th Avenue. We're in the A1 district, Polo Municipal School District, Story County Ambulance District, Nevada Fire, Midland Power, Iowa Regional Utilities Association, and the Indian Creek Watership. So this is a proposed division. It's a residential parcel subdivision of Parcel J. Prop lot one is on the north here, and that's 3.62 net acres. That will be built over a single family dwelling. Prop lot two contains the existing Farmstead and the existing dwelling. Both lots will have frontage along 677th Avenue. Here's the image of the plat. Again, the dwelling and all the farm dwellings are located on Prop Lot Two. So just a little background on the area. There was an approximately one-third acre piece divided from the northern edge of the original corridor, the late 1800s for the Oak Hills Cemetery, which made the resulting piece illegally a stamp, or a, it was, lot of record, there was, oh, I have a lot of this, lot of record. Parcel J was created in 2018 when the Farmstead was divided from that lot of record. Existing family dwelling located on Parcel J was constructed in the late 1800s. Prop lot one contains open pasture area and some natural resource area. And Prop lot two contains the existing single-family dwelling, several agricultural structures and livestock fencing. So we are on the very eastern edge of Richland Township here. We're about five and a half miles northeast of Nevada, two miles northeast of Brumell, and then approximately four and a half miles northwest of the city of Polo. There are 38 parcels located within a half mile of the subject property. Of those 38, 12, 15 dwellings and 10 meet the minimal lot size requirements in an A1 district, construct a single-family dwelling. There are four existing dwellings within a quarter mile of the proposed subdivision. Looking at the surrounding land use, we do have East Indian Creek to the west of the subject property. The Oak Hills Cemetery is located just to the northeast of the subject property. There's a winter ravine located directly to the north. The property to the east is located, is currently used as pasture, and this is also owned by the property owners. Their livestock and natural area to the south of the subject property. All of the surrounding properties are zone A1 acre. So in terms of the future of land use, our C2C plan designates this area as agricultural conservation. There is a portion of Prop Lot One that is designated natural resource area. Development is discouraged in this designation, but there's plenty of area outside of the designation for a single-family dwelling. No crop land will be taken out of production to accommodate the single-family dwelling. Some site photos, this is looking northeast at Prop Lot One, and looking northeast again at Prop Lot One, the existing access to the pasture area will be used for the dwelling. This is looking north along 677th Avenue, looking northeast across 677th Avenue, looking southeast of the pasture area, and then looking south along 677th. This is looking southwest at Prop Lot Two, hard to see, but the Farmstead is located here. Looking south, again, the existing dwelling. Farmstead, this is looking west at the existing Farmstead on Prop Lot Two, and then looking northeast at the existing Farmstead. Again, this is the southern boundary of Parcel J, so that would be the southern lot lineup of Lot Two. Looking northeast again to the pasture area, and then looking south along the curbs, a portion of 677th Avenue. I will go through the residential parcel subdivision regulations, where all of these regulations have been met. We did have some comments from the applicants, including if the existing driveway would be used, a couple modifications to the plat. The Assessors Office did comment that Lot One will remain assessed as an agricultural parcel, further conversation with the Autos, because it's still an agricultural use. We did send notification letters to property owners within a quarter mile regarding the public meeting today. No comments have been received. All of the requirements for the residential parcel subdivision plat have been met. Both Prop lots do have frontage along a company road. There's going to be no agricultural land taken out of production to construct the dwelling. All Story County land development regulations will apply to future development in terms of natural resource area and the C2C plan, land use policies. There are 38 parcels located within a half mile, or existing single-family dwellings, 10 parcels within a half mile that meet the minimal lot size requirement. So it is planning and development staff's recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to approve Oak Hills residential parcel subdivision plat as opposed to this alternative number one. I can take any questions if I have.
You said access question was asked, but answered.
Oh, it clearly is the existing.
Just the existing. And maybe this is more, what kind of timeline are you putting on this?
It's impossible to understand.
Looks like a beautiful, and it drove by, it looks like a beautiful spot to put up all 40 questions.
None.
Okay.
None, this is a painfully easy guess.
Yeah. Then make a motion.
I would move that we, we move the resolution of 19-45 Oak Hills residential parcel subdivision as presented. Congratulations, it's a great place, natural regeneration of the properties, is a great place to build, the fact we've got new neighbors out there, Howard, what was it, two years ago anyway, so you're a destination location.
I'll second the motion in there.
There was a motion and a conversation.
And a conversation.
Absolutely. So we got a motion in the second, further discussion?
Aye.
Chidi.
Aye.
Olsen.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Congratulations. Thanks. All right. Next item is consideration of revised purchasing, procurement policy with seven-day review. Lucy? You guys are welcome to stay, but don't feel like you have to.
Oh, you don't want to hear me talk about the procurement?
Purchasing is pretty exciting. Morning, Lucy.
Good morning. So I hope you all had a chance to read it. Our purchasing policy has been updated periodically, was first adopted in 2001, was adopted, we try to look at policies every three or four years. In this case, Darryn Moon, engineer, related to federal grant monies, they had asked FEMA, basically, to ask us to update this. I talked to my brothers and sisters in the Auditor's Pavilion, everyone that's had FEMA money, basically, has had to go through a state update, so steal for the best. I just, I looked at probably seven policies from other counties. I added information, I didn't take away anything that we have in our current policy. Page three is all new, regarding federal funds. I also beefed up the portion on grant guidance, and then I added something about segregation duties when it comes to purchasing. Those are all the recommendations that the Engineers' Office got from Homeland Security, so.
Good.
And then I had Derek look at it, he ran it by the state, and they said that it will fine, so it will go out for seven-day review, so we can see what your problem from the Department has to do with it.
Super.
It's just so that we are compliant with federal guidelines, and that we can spend our capital in a way it's supposed to be.
And as you reviewed our purchasing policy in total, compared to the others, as you looked at what you got from your brothers and sisters in the auditor's meeting.
Right.
Ours, well, ours has been pretty sound through the years.
Yeah, ours is actually, I think, more comprehensive. A lot of them have nothing, and basically, adopted a policy because of the Fed, but we're, we're actually, we're granting that into our existing policy, so we'll, even though we said we always will comply with all federal state rules, that's not enough, you have to actually specify certain sections of the agreement. So, anyway.
Good. Questions for Lucy?
None.
So I'll bring it back next week after seven-day review, we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Thank you.
Pick a motion along those lines, Board.
I would move that we put this out for seven-day review, as presented.
Second.
Got a motion in the second? Any further discussion? Olsen.
Aye.
Chidi.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passed.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Next is discussion consideration of usage of the Story County logo for promotional purpose by the Story County opioid task force. And it's not Carla today, it's Deb.
Good morning.
And Deb brought us some show-and-tell materials that you guys can look at as we're going.
I've already seen the packet.
Okay.
Okay, good morning, Board.
Good morning.
So the Story County opioid task force has been in existence for almost three years, and Story County's had seats since its inception at participating in the various kinds of public education and material promotional kinds of things that the task force has been doing. What you have before you is a packet that KD Family Resources has put together, they received some grant funds to do that, and they are asking task force participants if they want to place their logo on the promotional materials to pass that logo in law. And so according to our policy, we need to bring that before the Board for consideration. I do want to point out a couple of really kind of neat things that are in this packet, and again, it's all about, you know, safe use of medications, safe disposal of medications, and some upcoming free conversations, things that are going to occur in January. The medications part, there's a whole broad insert that talks about the different locations where old medications can be dropped off, the Nevada Police Station, the Ames Police Station, Story County Justice Center, and then Ucare pharmacies, or all kind of receptacles that you can take old medications to, and just put them in the receptacle, and they're eventually taken away, and they burn the medications. That also goes for pet medications, so anything that, that just don't need laying around the house, take to these receptacles and dispose of, because again, it's, it's an effort to help promote being rid of medications that could be, that otherwise fall into the lung, and as far as just being pushed, that you know what that is. The other cool thing, I think, that's in here is a little packet of material, and this is just another way to dispose of medications. So if you take the medication vial, put some warm water in it, open this packet, and pour in the contents, and let it stand for, I think, 10 or 15 minutes, it dissolves medications, and then you can just throw it away. So I think just another good thing to know about as people consider disposing of medications in a safe and environmentally friendly way. So those are a couple of the things in the packet. We'd like to have Story County's logo be a part of it, and help promote what the task force is to be.
Super. Thanks, Deb. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I would move the announcement of the Story County logo for promotional purchases for the Story County opioid task force as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Good. Further discussion?
I just have a comment pointing out, there are actually four departments, or offices that are involved with the task force. We've got the Sheriff's, the Sheriff's Office, plus we have Board of Supervisors, Community Services, and Veterans Affairs, that between all of those are regular attendance and participants in it. So I appreciate that, I think that this is appropriate.
A hundred percent. Absolutely. Any further discussion?
No.
Chidi.
Aye.
Olsen.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Thanks, Deb.
Thank you.
Next, discussion consideration of Story County funding $800, which is half of the cost for facilitation services provided by Donna Gilligan, who is an outstanding consultant, for the workforce conversation meeting tomorrow.
That's right. So just a little bit about the meeting. This is an effort involving Rina Dryer with Ames Economic Development Group, Jean Cressy with United Way, and then Story County, to address workforce needs for many of our employers here in the county, as well as many individuals here in the county that need some extra help either obtaining a job or sustaining a job. And so we're pulling together businesses and industries, and then human service agencies tomorrow to talk about how they can work together on addressing the workforce needs of those businesses, and helping individuals and those agencies work with, in obtaining and keeping jobs. So we think it's kind of a unique type of workforce conversation, but we're very interested in, in the outcome of tomorrow. We know we're not going to have all of the answers, but we're hoping that we can walk away with maybe a couple of ideas, that we can then continue moving forward in helping these two groups continue their conversations. We want the agencies to know what the businesses are willing to do to hire individuals that have some extra needs or extra circumstances that need to be considered, and we want the businesses to know about the agencies that are out there to help provide those support services. We also have kind of a group of what we're calling connectors, so DMAC, Iowa Workforce Development, Manpower, those individuals coming and letting both groups know what they can offer to help a participant at the table. So Donna is going to be facilitating us throughout the day, and this will be a shared cost with United Way, so in obtaining her dollars.
Yeah, and so, just when I thought that our unemployment rate couldn't go any lower, we were at 1.4 percent, we're the lowest MSA in America, and 1.4 percent is in essence full employment, and heck, if we didn't go down to 1.1 percent in the most recent report. So we're to the point where everybody who is employable right now is employed, but this is a unique opportunity to try to work with some of those individuals who, for whatever reason, have not been all that employable as we need the job, and I think this is exactly the right way to do it. I like the concept of partnering. I know we've done it in the past, partnering with United Way for these kinds of things. I hope that will be with favorable to Board. Further questions or comments, Board?
I'm excited that the three of you, because Deb has been a representative on this, and has worked very, very hard, all three of them, I think, to brainstorm and get this together. And when you look at who's been invited in the partners, I mean, you know, Project Iowa's been invited for their, I can't think of very many partners who won't be there tomorrow, and to have everybody have that same dialogue, and hopefully live with the same opportunities, but also expectations and challenges, understanding. So kudos, in advance, and I bet it's going to be great.
Yeah, I mean, if it were easy, then it would already be taken care of, and this is one of those problems that you love having. Yeah, I mean, you love trying to work through these things, but it all starts with a conversation, and hopefully, so we've got outstanding groups, but they're all just kind of a half step off each other, and hopefully, this conversation can get everybody kind of moving in the same direction, where we can take care of some of these things that, that I think, I think it's a once-in-a-lifetime chance to take care of some of these things, and so I'm excited about doing it.
We already have about 45 RSVPs, and it's half and half, it looks like, from the respondents, so, yeah, we're looking forward to the conversation.
I'll stand.
So make the motion.
Good.
We approve $800 to be paid related to the workforce discussion that will occur on November 27th. And I don't need to say who it's paid to.
28.
Huh?
28.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Motion in the second, further discussion. Okay, so the motion is up to $800, but it's an equal split with United Way for the actual cost of facilitation. Olsen.
Aye.
Chidi.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. It passes. Absolutely, thanks, Deb. No agency reports, no department reports, no other reports. Public forum number two, opportunity for anybody to talk about anything they want right now, come right on up to the microphone. And seeing no one moving to the microphone, we'll go on to Liaison. Simon Sparty, I think it's you this week to start us.
At a rousing meeting with City of Ames last week, their engineering department, City Manager Steve Shanker, in regards to all the foreseen and unforeseen that are in the Trinity District, as the City of Ames did the anticipation to the east, I think they're coming to some comfort, or at least knowledge, of what their obligations will be with this presence, and some of it was unanticipated, but I think we will have a partner going forward, and I think that you guys, we will try to make an installment on that partnership here next month in our Trinity District meeting in Grant Five, and wish all parties luck going forward in the out years.
Thank you.
That said, been feeling like everybody here, a lot of questions and inquiries in regards to the capable applications by the member family. It is an involvement thing, took one from a city council member here in Nevada just this morning, before I was trying to walk out of the house, and it will be also another, I think we both had the opportunity to educate the public, and I think we should not miss that chance, because we are dealing with a body of law that does not give the county a lot of opportunity to put purchase on decisions. And so I would say that, I would encourage you, and as I know you're already doing, to take every chance you can, small conversations, to inform the public in regards to what our abilities are, and then I will let it bring itself to us, and we will go for it. After that, just small, sundry stuff, you know, that's on the day-to-day.
Yeah, and so where we are in the processes, DN and I went and did their site visits yesterday, I believe. I think our internal group, Jerry, I'll look at you, our internal group, met this morning and talked through everything, and so now we're kind of in a quiet period between now and December 11th when we have the public hearing. I would expect this room to be completely full, I would expect that public hearing to last in terms of hours, not minutes, and, and we'll get through, we'll get through this to the end. Simon Sparty. Olsen.
Also having those conversations, and I agree with you, Rick, so thanks on that. Let's see, I went to the Ames City Council workshop then, on last Tuesday evening. They were discussing stormwater management and a change in their stormwater ordinance that I don't believe will really directly affect us in the unincorporated areas at all. But it was a good conversation for me to listen to, to about some of the concerns of the development community and a large employer in Ames about, as we look at improving the already what's laid in asphalt and cement, and I'm losing, probably, missing a term, okay, about what we call that pavement, all right, that some of the challenges as a business is trying to come up to new code. And for me, it was that part of the discussion was interesting, because some businesses in Ames apparently are declining to repave their parking lots or do improvements, because they're triggering the entire stormwater ordinance then, and it's, it's creating quite costs. So that was informative as we move forward on what we will do. And then the second part of it had to do with the nutrient reduction strategy, and for Ames, it's related to their water pollution control facility, and they have some parts that are expiring there soon, or within the next few years. They're looking at a $35 million bill to have to replace some of that, but the consultant came back with the, or the discussion was just how much in alternate ways, such as going ahead and putting in the bio reactors, et cetera, how much would it cost, how much would it save for the city's obligation? And there will be, I believe, opportunities to, once again, partner with the Ames City Council, if they take on some of these strategies related to water control up north of them, and projects north of them also. So, and I just gave them a quick update about what Leanne had told us at our meeting, just, I think, maybe that same Tuesday or the Tuesday before, about where our internal group was in the watershed assessment. So, so I think it was worth the time. I have SIRHA tonight, that's the Central Idaho Regional Housing Authority. I do see that in Story County of SIRHA's allotment, Section 8 housing, we have 10 more of those voucher programs coming here in Story County, and I'll find out tonight whether those are 10 new vouchers, and the agency has decided to release some of its reserve funds, or if these are shifts people that have just decided to move to Story County, and I haven't heard of one on Thursday morning.
Good. So one of the frustrating things, and so appreciate you attending the Ames conversation, and love the idea of Ames kind of moving up along the Squaw Creek to the north, and up along the Skunk River to the north of Ames, and putting in some of these practices, but one of the frustrating things that we learned in the last 10 days is that IDALLS, in their infinite wisdom, has decided to not fund Squaw Creek Watershed Authority anymore. And so it's going to create-
Did they give you any reason?
Yeah, the reason they gave was that they'd only use 20, that Prairie Rivers had only used 20 percent of the available monies, but that's an inaccurate, that's an inaccurate number. I think this is just me, I think what it came down to is, we are so far outside the box in the terms, in terms of the way the Squaw Creek Watershed Authority operates, is put together and operates, that it's not viewed as replicable, and so they don't, they want to spend money in places, it seems like they're going to bigger watersheds with more acres, but less impact. The impact that we were having, some of the stats, you know, we doubled cover crops, we doubled all other practices that were going on in there. The people of Prairie Rivers have done a fantastic job, but now that entire program is in real danger. It's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that they're losing now. So trying to figure out how to keep that going forward and keep advancing is going to be a, not only budgetary, but a logistical problem that we're going to have to deal with. Other than that, I am pretty much all ISAC all the time right now. The person who was supposed to be, become the president of the ISAC Supervisors Exec Board did not win reelection, so we're scrambling right now to figure out what leadership looks like for 2019 on the ISAC Supervise Board, and putting together, the meetings that we're putting together, and I think I mentioned here a few weeks ago, developing a concept for continuing education credits for supervisors, and trying to more formalize what it's, what it is to be a supervisor, and the kind of training that is offered, and participation with our statewide. and, uh, participation with our statewide, uh, statewide group, so, a lot of that, and, uh, we're going to have a fun couple of weeks here. December 4th will be a big meeting, December 11th, if you include, uh, a regular meeting, the public hearing on, uh, on the Loveview Farms, uh, three proposals, and then come back that evening with what will be a, uh, you know, it's a five mil, potentially $5 million project in Grant Five, uh, I hope you guys are getting plenty of sleep and, and eating well, because you're needed on December 11th. If there's nothing else, then take a motion to adjourn?
So motion.
Call those papers, aye?